You trusted me.
The public, anybody can go in. They can't block it off.
But is there like a sign that says like?
All right, can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, August 13th. It is a little after 7:40 PM. We just came from executive session. We were discussing police agreement. Uh, first item on the agenda is a resolution considering setting a public hearing on an application for a CDBG grant to Westchester County for improvements to the AJP Senior Center.
Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rybrook shall hold a public hearing on a date to be determined, which will include opportunities for interested members of the public to provide written and oral comments on applications for Community Development Block Grant to the County of Westchester Consortium for Communities for Improvements to the AJP, such as repairs of the wall and fence in addition to the generator.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Um, so is there a reason that it wouldn't be on our next meeting?
Yeah, because the applications are due, because we only have one meeting in August, the applications are due in, I think, the first week in September, September 6th, so we just don't have to have a special. We need a special meeting, so it's just a question of when. Won't be a long one, for sure.
Uh, let's.
Tomorrow night.
I'm.
No, we have to, we have to have a time to publish a public hearing notice.
Does, two weeks from now, is that?
Absolutely.
Enough time? Because then I would suggest that we just do what would be the night of our regularly scheduled meeting, were we to have had it? Because we know that it's not going to interfere with any other village meetings.
Sure.
So, you know, and then we would just need three of us to come here for a very quick meeting.
So that would be August 27th?
I would suggest maybe on the earlier side.
August 27th?
Yeah, I mean, I'll.
Six o'clock, five?
Five o'clock?
Six, whatever you guys think.
Would five o'clock, can we, I can be there on the 27th at five o'clock. Can anyone else?
I could be there at 4:55.
Who's got 4:54?
Have a public hearing. Now we have to have a public hearing on this block grant.
For a public, we're gonna have to open a public hearing, close a public hearing, and vote on submitting the CDBG grant.
I mean, as of right now, I'm supposed to be in the city at a client thing. What time are we talking about?
Five o'clock.
Do we all need to be here?
No, we need three people.
I could be here at five.
What about Susan?
All right, let's.
Can you be here at five?
I don't know if I can be here at five.
Sal may, Sal may be able to, let's just set it for that for now.
I'll call you guys if Sal says he, we'll, we'll, we'll send a message to Sal. If he can't attend, then we'll look for another day.
Yeah, I just, I'd rather do it on the earlier side so that, so that village staff that needs to be here can go home.
For a five-minute meeting, that'd be appreciated.
We could also do, we could also do it in the morning that day.
Look at where I am on that day.
I mean, can people do 8:30 AM, 9:00 AM that day?
I could do it at 4:55 PM.
Actually, Kira has soccer child at 8:30. I can come after that before I go to the city.
AM or PM?
Oh, AM.
AM.
She has soccer at 8:00, 8:00 AM.
Yeah, so, no, but it's fine if. I, I actually, I mean.
Morning is definitely better for me.
What would, David, what would be the earliest that you would prefer?
4:54. No, I, I could, um, if you really wanted it at 9:00, I could get here at 8:30.
Why don't we do 9:00?
9:00, fine.
Does that work for you, Stephanie, if we did 9:00 AM?
I mean, if she doesn't make it, I might have to go get her, but yeah, it's fine. Just kidding, hopefully.
So tell her to make it.
You know, this is taped, right?
And live on TV.
She's gonna make it. Yes, she will.
This could be a five-minute meeting?
Yes.
And that's a Tuesday, right? So I don't have any.
Yeah, Tuesday, let's do it.
Just to explain what this is, so this is the next round of CDBG applications. Unfortunately, the census tract data changed, so we, we, our parks aren't eligible in that area, and our sidewalks aren't eligible. Otherwise, we were planning on putting in applications for them, um, for park improvements and sidewalk improvements. But the, uh, so we're focusing on AJP, which is eligible because of senior centers, seniors are eligible on a national level. They're considered low mod. So, um, two projects, one is a, a generator replacement project, and the other is the retaining wall on the entrance to the left side as you drive in, and the fencing to the rear abutting to 87. So, as amended?
As amended for 9:00 AM on the 27th. So, can I have a motion in a second, as amended, please?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Under protest, yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. All right, sorry, I'm trying to look at something else here right now. I'm going back. All right, uh, resolution number two, considering awarding a proposal for village T-shirts and apparel for rec department programs.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook solicited RFPs through BidNet for T-shirts and apparel for programs starting this September and continuing for a period of one year. And whereas on July 23rd, the board awarded the RFP to ACES Custom Apparel based on the following bid results, and there's ACES Fusion and Days Off Designs. And whereas upon further review, there was two problems with the above bid results summary. One, there were six other vendors that submitted electronic responses through BidNet that were not included in the RFP summary. And two, ACES Custom Apparel's cumulative bid amount of 17,516.25 and 25 cents included the price of $28 per shirt. So there was one item that was confusing, and they didn't have, they provided a quantity that was added in under the heading of Day and Travel Camp T-shirts and Tank Tops that should not have been included in the bid results summary since the quantity for this item was not listed in the RFP, so others did not bid on the item. And whereas upon further review, below is a summary of the bid results. So there's a total of nine vendors, and our lowest bid was DOT Designs of Monroe Township, New Jersey. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of, uh, Village Board of Trustees hereby rescinds the resolution at, from July 23rd, awarding ACES Custom Apparel proposal, and be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby re-awards the proposal to the Rec Department for DOT Designs Monroe Township, New Jersey for the total bid amount of $17,027.55, representing the lowest responsible proposal submitted by the nine proposals received for these items. Be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator hereby authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of the resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Let me explain this one. That'd be a little easier. We've been trying to decentralize bidding and have departments learning how to do more of the bidding process, so it doesn't kind of fall back on, you know, one or two people. And as part of that, BidNet is, does have a confusing program. They don't alert you when you get bids in electronically, so you have to look for them at the time it closed. So in doing that, the department just missed the, um, seeing the electronic ones and only saw the other ones that were submitted. So when you looked at it and we reviewed it, it was, um, there was more out there. So we want, we want to do it the right way, so we're rescinding the other resolution, passing it this way. I'll just call it growing pains. Learning, learning opportunity. The good news is, nothing was purchased. Doesn't happen until September anyhow, but we did it in advance.
That's it. All right. Uh, we do have motions in a second, um, now that we have the explanation. I think we're good to go. Any questions or comments from the board?
My comment is the same one I made on July 23rd, which is, based on the bids, I wonder if all these people were looking at the same contract.
Well, it is unusual. A lot of places don't do what we do. If you look at the spreadsheet behind it, you can see how much is involved. I mean, the spreadsheet, if you look at it, it's, it's, it's a lot of details. And a lot of T-shirt companies just aren't familiar with the bidding process either. So there, if you look at it, they get very, sometimes they get very confused, and that leads to people not bidding on others or not submitting them correctly. You get a lot of that throughout, you know, on these types of bids. But this is the right way to do it, so then we could buy things throughout the year, and we already have everything bid out. And you see, they're all from all over the country.
Yeah. Such clever names.
Yeah.
Good? All right, I think we're good.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on to resolution number three, considering accepting a stock donation for the AJP Center and authorizing the sale of such donated stock and placement of the proceeds into a special purpose trust account.
Whereas Melvin Klugman of 40-B Avon Circle, Unit B, Rybrook, New York wishes to donate certain stocks having an approximate value between $25,050,000 to the Village of Rybrook for the Anthony J. Pacillo Senior Center. And whereas Ry, the village is interested in accepting this donation of stocks with the expressed understanding that the Village of Rybrook will be opening a brokerage account in order to receive said donation and promptly liquidating such donated stocks. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts a donation of certain stocks having an approximate value between $25,050,000 from Melvin Klugman to the Village of Rybrook to be used for the benefit of the AJP Senior Center. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes and approves the prompt sale of such donated stocks once owned by the Village of Rybrook and authorizes the proceeds of such sale to be placed into a special purpose trust account to be called the Senior Center Trust, the funds of which will be, to be used for the benefit of the Senior Center. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the establishment of an account with TD Bank for the limited purpose of selling all donated stocks once owned by the Village of Rybrook at a cost not to exceed $500, to be deducted from the proceeds of such sale, and with such account to remain open only for the purpose of receiving and promptly liquidating any future stock donations for the length of time determined by the treasurer and administrator. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the following individuals to be authorized signers and to be authorized to give such directives with respect to the account established TD Bank for the purpose of selling all donated stocks once owned by the Village of Rybrook, and that's the administrator and the treasurer. And be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby authorize the mayor, administrator, and treasurer to take all actions and to sign any and all documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
So, you know, Chris, I mean, there's a lot to digest here, you know, certainly, you know, maybe just, you can go through just a brief explanation, because we've, we've heard it in the past of why we're not allowed to own stock.
Yep.
But also, you know, my question would be, is there anything attached to this donation that is requiring, I mean, aside from it being only for the AJP Center?
Nope.
But is there any other, anything else limiting what could, what this could be used for?
This is an, this is an active member of the center. It could be used for whatever the village determines it should be used for. It goes into the special trust account for that purpose. So it gets audited out of that trust account. As the mayor said, we cannot invest in stocks. We can't hold stocks. So this happens in other municipalities. We've been going, this has been a lot of work to set this up, which is, we had to go to our financial advisors and our, um, make sure that we can hold the stocks. So basically, they've, they've, other municipalities have done this as well. You have to create the account, open it up, and then you have to take it, you have to liquidate the stocks, and then you can take the receipt in of money, um, and, and put it into the trust fund. The account we're gonna leave open, which does not cost us any money, there's no annual fees or any kind of fees that are related, and only the treasurer and I can, uh, we can close it, we can do whatever, at the end of the day, we can close it. We can't hold any stocks at any time. So we're told there's gonna be future donations, so we'd like to have the account open, because it takes a lot of work to put it in place and a lot of paperwork, so this way, by keeping it open, the board can then in the future accept any donations that are offered from anyone for the Senior Center and put it into that same trust account, liquidate it and put it in the same trust account.
Fantastic. I think it's really nice that somebody's making this donation. Thank you, Mr. Klugman.
Extremely nice. He's a very active member at the center, and, you know, it's, uh, he really loves the center down there, and, um, we're very appreciative.
Yeah, and I would echo that and thank Mr. Klugman for his donation. This certainly will, will help us down there and help us, you know, get some things for the center that we may not have otherwise been able to.
And there's a lot of specific language in talking with Ralph and talking with council. We want to make sure it's very clear to any future, you know, 20 years from now or 10 years from now, any future treasurer, any future administrator, it needs to be really clear that you can never invest, you know, who, who may not be familiar that you can't invest stocks. Everyone should be. But at least making it very clear on what you can and can't do.
Right. I think it's really nice. So it's an in and out in one day.
Uh, as quick as possible, as long as it takes them to process it, yeah.
Right.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes, and thank you.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes, and thank you.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes. All right, and, and thank you, even though I already said thank you, it was 30 seconds ago, so I'll say thank you again. All right, resolution number four. Which, um, considering approving contract number 24-13 Pest Control.
Whereas the board, uh, the Village of Rybrook solicited bids for pest control. And whereas the bid for contract 24-13 was advertised in Westmore News on Friday, July 19th, was made available in the BidNet Direct Bid System, and the bids were open at 10:00 AM on August 6th. And there was following bids, uh, one bid was rejected. It wasn't sealed. It was just dropped off in an envelope, uh, in a folder, which you can't do, and there was, uh, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 other bids that were received. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees has determined that the lowest responsible bidder meeting the requirements of the contract documents is Hello Pest Control of 545, I love the names, Sawmill River Road, RNC, New York. And be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees approves alternate A in contract 23-4-13 for established hourly rates and overtime rates. And be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
So my obvious question here is that of the five bids that were actual, you know, real bids, three of them seem to be very close in pricing.
Yes.
And this one is, I mean, do we have any references on this company?
Yes.
We know that they can do the job that we're hiring them for.
Yes, Michael Nowak, uh, called many, called several references to make sure that it was, um, that the people were happy with their services.
Okay.
I'm trying to figure out if Parkaway provides coffins for each pest that it kills to get that price.
So, and, and I'm assuming it's written into the contracts that if they're not performing.
For performance, you can, yeah, you can change it to for performance.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number five, considering approving contract 24-12 Fire Sprinkler Service.
Continuing Trustee Heiser's wonderment of why the prices are so different.
Yeah, very different.
Whereas solicited bids for contract 24-12 Fire Sprinkler Service, and the bids were advertised in the Westmore News and on Friday, July 12th, and the bids were open on 10:30 on July 30th. There was two bids received. One was Spano Sprinkler in the amount of $30,735 and 50 cents, and the other from Total Fire Protection Inc. in the amount of $79,616.62. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Trustees determine the lowest bidder, or meeting the requirements of the documents is Spano Sprinkler of 52 Putnam Street, Mount Vernon, New York. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves alternate A in the contract for our, that includes hourly rates and overtime rates. Be it further resolved, the ma, mayor and administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of the resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
What does some of these companies ever get?
Well, if you're the only bidder.
They might not.
And they need the service.
But they would have to be the only bidder.
Yeah, you try to be the, sometimes they're the only bidder. There, there's only two here.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Why is this, this one's not loading for me. Considering, resolution number six, considering fiscal year 23-24 budget transfers.
Now therefore be resolved that the following 23-24 year-end budget transfers be hereby approved. These are transfers from the contingency lines into recreation lines, and, uh, total three amounts is $73.64, $818, and $369.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I am, for some reason, my resolution, the, the resolutions aren't loading for me, so I'll have to go by what you said. Yeah, that's fine. All right, uh.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number seven, considering reallocation of capital projects funds, budget modification, and closing of capital projects.
Now therefore be resolved that the following transfer between capital projects is approved, and this is a transfer for replacing tablets from the police vehicles to a cap, a separate capital line. It's moving it from one year to the next. Basically, you're combining them and moving them forward in the amount of $32,986.75. And be it further resolved, the following capital project budgets be modified to recognize grant funds received from the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services Law Enforcement Technology Program. And there's a transfer of, uh, there's a budget modification for capital. You're increasing the capital fund reserved for that purpose of an amount of $50,081.09, and then putting the appropriation into the tablet replacement in the same amount of $50,081.09. And be it further resolved, the following capital project budget be restated as follows, and this is the new amount. Basically, you're taking the old adopted budget amount, modifying the budget, and it's a change of the $83.067.84, which is the amount added together above. Be it further resolved, the following capital project with no remaining balance is closed and removed from the capital project length schedule, and that's the tablets and police vehicles, um, in the amount of the $32,896.75.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I'm so glad we have Trish.
I know, I know. I mean, I can't imagine what it would be like if we didn't have all of these little cleanups as we go along. Our audits would be terrible, our, you know.
What we do too is, so in order to, just the backup behind it is, we all meet as departments once a month, and we go over all the, the status of the projects, we go over the financing of the projects, we go over the budgets that, so we don't, you know, we don't exceed, we have a plan to implement everything. And like, Chief Austin will kind of give an update on where the pa, tablets are, and then if there's a balance, he said, we should really move that forward. It's cleaner if we can put into the, the next, the current year's project. So that's kind of discussion, then Trish makes all that magic happen at the end of the day after we leave the meeting, right?
All right, any questions, comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eight, considering approval of the minutes for the meeting held on February 27th, 2024.
Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meeting held on February 27th, 2024.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And then we have a couple of add-on resolutions. All right, resolution, uh, now that it was loading and now it stopped again. Uh, resolution number nine, considering accepting a sponsorship donation for the Ice Cream Friday Event Series.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook holds an Ice Cream Friday Event Series in July each year, and whereas the Learning Care Group wishes to sponsor one of the Ice Cream Fridays for an total amount of $500, and whereas Rybrook wishes to accept the sponsorship donation, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees, acting as the Board of Directors of the Friends of Rybrook, accepts the sponsorship donation in the amount of $500 to offset expenses for the Ice Cream Friday Event Series. And be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator authorized to sign any documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
This is for July 2025?
No, this is of the past year. We just got to check in, so we couldn't do it until we received it. And just to mention, the Learning Care Group is the new daycare provider at the, uh, up at Belfair.
Very nice.
Well, we appreciate the donation, and, um, that goes to our Ice Cream Fridays that already occurred, but it's.
I'd say it's very sweet of them.
I like that, actually.
Clever of you.
Anyway, um, but it's, you know, we, we certainly appreciate them, uh, supporting our community events.
Yes. And, um, yeah, and hopefully they'll be willing to do it again next year.
Any other questions, comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. One second.
For tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
I don't know if it's too.
No.
Okay. All right, uh, resolution number 10. Uh, they're loading, great. Considering authorizing legal counsel Keenan Bean to submit an appeal on behalf of the Village of Rybrook in connection with the people of the state of New York v. Leslie and Douglas Trokey.
Uh, Ralph's gonna read this one.
Sure. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rybrook hereby authorizes the village attorney, Keenan Bean, PC, to commence and handle an appeal on behalf of the Board of Trustees and Village of Rybrook as applicable and appropriate to the appellate term, second department, from the judge's dismissal of the matters in connection with people of the state of New York versus Leslie and Douglas Trokey, Trokey, case numbers, uh, 22010243, 22010037, 21030002, Okay. And there's two, two more numbers that I didn't read, but are written in the resolution. Before the Ry justice court, county of Westchester, state of New York, at the proceedings on May 3rd, 2024, for which a corrected transcript was issued on July 10th, 2024, and marked so ordered by the judge on July 26th, 2024. Thank you. That was a mouthful.
That is a mouthful.
We have profound respect for the rest of them now, right?
Absolutely.
All right, can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
And we did discuss this in executive session. It is something that we believe that we should move forward with, and we will, uh, see where we go from there. Any questions or comments from the board?
Well, Ralph, I, I believe you just said all this really does is it's authorizing Keenan Bean to file a notice of appeal.
Correct.
Yeah, that, that's all it is at this point. All right.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. And before we get to the administrator's report, we may have one more add-on resolution.
The villages, yeah, the villages received another request for an add-on resolution. I think the mayor is going to recuse himself.
I'm gonna recuse myself for this.
Okay, so I'm gonna read it. So the village has received a request from Judy Klein of 68 Valley Terrace requesting, uh, the use of Village Streets for a block party to be held on September 14th uh, on Valley Terrace from Argyle to 60-61 Valley Terrace on the hours for between 4:00 PM and 7:30 PM. And, uh, be it further resolved that the. Three to, three to nine? What do you? What hours, what hours it would be appropriate?
You got two phones here.
She's do, one just do like three to, three to eight or three to nine? Three to, from 3:00 PM. 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Yeah, from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And be it further resolved that the, uh, that the approval is conditioned upon any recommendations of the police department.
Okay, okay.
Is there a motion?
Yes, so moved. Second.
Wait, are we gonna be invited? You never invite us.
Is there gonna be anybody that speaks on behalf of this motion?
Are there any residents who would like to speak?
Yes, you will all be invited as elected officials in the Village of Rybrook, along with other elected officials that we typically invite. We will make sure that any trustee, any elected official in the Village of Rybrook is invited to the block party.
What food is being served?
I haven't figured that out yet.
Isn't this a little bit premature to make this resolution?
Considering when the village board next meets, we found it prudent to make sure that we were on this agenda.
I think that was very wise of you. Thank you for planning it so well.
You're so smart.
Greg, you wanna call the roll?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes, have a great time.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
And in this case, the deputy mayor, Heiser.
Despite the sketchy information, yes.
So moved.
All right, administrator's report.
Okay, just have a couple of items. One, uh, we have our third music in the park event tomorrow night. It's Wednesday, uh, August 14th from 6:45 PM in Pine Ridge Park, and the band is called Logical Pretzel, which is doing, uh, Steely Dan cover songs. and maybe other music, but it's, it's very exciting. I think it's the first year, Trustee Epstein, that this band has played.
Yes.
So it should be a lot of fun, it'd be very, be a great event, and hopefully beautiful weather, too. There's also, and the fourth music in the park event is gonna be held on August twenty-eighth, and that's Beely Dan, which has been very popular and played in Rybrook before. Also, quick thanks, we have several people donating. This is, the sponsors of that program is Julia B. Fee Sotheby's, it's Parker Jewish Institute, also Shana Kamarski? What's, Shana, Shana Karmaski, Corey Sossauer, and Anna Leder, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we thank them for their sponsorship of that event, and thank Trustee Epstein for coordination of all those events, all the music in the park events.
It's my pleasure.
We also have this Friday, we have a movie night, which is this Friday, August sixteenth. It's called Camp Hideout. Never heard of it, but okay.
Okay.
And it's from, it begins at eight fifteen in Pine Ridge Park. Con Ed is gonna be doing some gas work. We sent an email to the community, and they're gonna be doing it from August fourteenth to the thirtieth, and that's gonna be in the rocking horse area, so rocking horse trail between Dorchester and Country Ridge Drive. So there'll be some disruption there, so expect delays. There'll be some noise, be a lot of work going on during that time. Again, it starts tomorrow through August thirtieth, and they go from eight AM to four PM. So that's gonna, they're trying to knock this out in, in August, which would be good. And lastly, we have two closing, two closings scheduled for the NRCS buyout program. One is tomorrow at twenty-two Brook Lane in the offices of Keenan Bean. And the other one is going to be later this month, and there's one more they're trying to get in before the month's end. So those are, that's just this month, and then we'll be working on more next month.
I have a question. When is he doing that volunteer appreciation?
Tomorrow.
Oh, that's tomorrow?
Yep.
What time is that?
Five forty-five.
Five forty-five. No, I didn't say it because it's not really a public event. It's, I mean, it's, people can come and watch. It's not private, but it's, yeah. No, it's okay, five forty-five tomorrow. It's in a park, so people can come. But we intentionally do it right before the music event. We figure it's a nice lead-in for, you know, hopefully people can come and then stay for the music.
Right. And that, and then I remind everyone again, the music event starts at?
Six forty-five.
So hopefully we will see you there tomorrow, everyone who's listening. The weather is actually supposed to be nice again.
Yes, thankfully.
Somehow we got this wonderful week of weather. We can hope that it continues.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you for arranging good weather season.
Yeah, oh, I did it all. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right, any public comment? Seeing none, anything else? Anything else?
We're punchy tonight, aren't we?
That is, any other comments from the board?